This is the United States of America into the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, the living, the dead.
Thank you everyone. Before we get started with our usual business, we have an executive session, interview of central planning board member. I'll go ahead and make a motion to go into executive session subject to MRSA four five six day.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion favor say aye?
Aye.
Most passive. John, you're saying yes?
Yes, sorry.
I'll be better for all for the rest of the motion. Alright, so we have for anything in session. Lindsay, if you could join us, we're going to go in here in thirty minutes and we'll be back.
I'm.
I would see red on it.
Thank you.
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 For your patience. I'll go ahead and make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. John, we have to do the roll call.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed by zero. Alright, thank you everyone for your patience. My first order of business is a border of the center meeting. Just talk about some abatements that's a while. And Berna, this might be hard because we all keep to the wifi so we're navigating from our phones.
Okay, that's alright. I have, okay, there's paper.
Okay. Um, thank you.
This, you may feel like this didn't need to go to you, but it didn't quite fit in perfectly with the delegation of authority. So I figure it better be safe than sorry about you. So would you like me to?
Yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, so Dennis St. Pierre had approached me about some inconsistencies with a couple of his lots. So we're talking about map 11, lot 29, and lot 30. And in 2021, he had, they had dated out a lot of record. That's previously a lot of record, but it was confusing to figure it out because there were mapping errors over the years. So since 2001, he had been assessed incorrectly because of a mapping error. So what happened was, so if you look into, according to the plan indeed back in 2001, this is, this image that you have in your packet shows the layout of his land. And a lot of it is in Barwick, right? But down here, the pink area is where lot 29 should have been. And it had been mapped on the opposite side of the lot right here. So because of that, it has the incorrect acreage and it has the incorrect house because there's two houses right here. Who literally affecting the wrong house, the wrong acreage for many years. So it came to me and over the process of figuring it out, we were able to fix it. And so this is, this sheet right here kind of shows you the abatements and the supplementals. And you can see the difference is only $5.00 if it's good sense when everything is processed.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, so the corrections, the abatements, and then the supplementals. Okay, so those are the corrections, but we also have a new lot, but still it all ended up being.
Got it.
So if you, you want more specifics, I can give you that. But, but yeah, it was a matter of lot 29 being placed in the wrong place back in years and years ago. And just this error just persisted and was never fixed.
Okay, so it was basically the abatements and stuff are to kind of shuffle and get things in the right place. But like financially, it's all in the wash.
Because there's three of her donors. There's Dennis Senior, Dennis Junior, and then the 18. So we have to get all that squared away.
Okay, yeah, okay. Do you guys have any questions? John, any questions? Can you just shake your head? I'm assuming no. Alright, and I'm forgetting, we take action on the during the board of assessors meeting.
So there's three supplementals, and they need two signatures each because the supplemental has the certificate and warrant on the same page.
Okay.
And then the abatements, we need one signature from each of them.
Okay.
And there's two abatements.
Okay, so what are the motions that we need then? And again, bear away, could.
I don't know if you can do a blanket motion for all of it.
Oh, well, it's all separate.
For the individual lots, like sort of one for 29, one for 30? Okay.
Yeah, no one.
Okay, so the motion would be that we wanted to grant the abatement for map lot 011-029.
Yep.
And I thought, correct.
I think so, okay.
Alright, I'll go ahead and offer a motion to grant the abatement as presented for map lot 011-029. And the amount? An 500.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? Question? Okay, all those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye, motion passed by zero. And then for our second, second one, I'll make a motion to grant the abatement for map lot 011-030.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All of them say aye, John?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Motion passed by zero. Alright, so that was the only one, right? Those two?
The two abatements. Now you have the rest of the notes.
Got it, okay.
You want my stuff, please, I hope?
Yeah, yeah.
What am I?
There's 29 years of that year.
Oh, thank you.
There's, you know.
Okay.
For something else. That's going to be. That's the first one, not the second one. This is.
Okay.
Become locked down.
Yeah.
Become locked down.
That's great, okay, thank you. Alright, so three motions for this now. So I'll offer a motion to accept issue for the supplemental. What is the right verb? Approve, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental for account 874, map 011, lot 029. Property taxes from the amount of $5,364.8% and assessed value of $384,300.
Sorry.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by zero. Up next, I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental for account number 875, map 011, lot 030. Property taxes from the amount of $1,024.66 and an assessed value of $73,400.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by zero. And last one, a motion to approve the supplemental for account 3184, map 011, lot 030-A. Property taxes from the amount of $33,760.82 and the assessed value of $269,400.
Second.
Motion in a second. So then, all those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by zero. Right, thank Berna for coming in and helping us with that. Nothing else from the board, it's not the vote of order for the assessor's perspective.
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
I'm gonna.
Okay.
Um, alright. We will move into our regular council meeting. Thank you guys for getting us paper. Maybe I started on time. Um, so first we have to approve minutes from our last few meetings. So up first, we have a public hearing from September 26 for general assistance. Any added to these minutes from anybody? No? Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing on general assistance ordinance dependencies on September 26, 2023, Avrin.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by zero. Um, and I should have mentioned this earlier, but Councilor Jane is joining us from Zoom this evening, which is part of why we're doing the role. Well, we do it usually, but. Okay, up next, we have public hearing from September, September 26 for the assessor's lot merger policy. Any edits? I'll offer a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Take a vote, John?
Aye.
Yeah.
Jessica.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by zero. And last one, we have our town council meeting minutes from September 26, 2023. Any edits, bodies? Alright, I'll offer a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Take a vote, John?
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by zero. Alright, next order of business, signing the treasurer's warrants. So we have the treasurer's warrant from October 5, 2023. I'll offer a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated October 5, 2023, in the amount of $1,372,155.74.
At a chair of 40 million.
What does it say?
One thousand.
$1,372,055.74. Thank you very much for mentioning that. Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Um, for discussion, this includes our payment to the school district. Um, any other discussion, question? Okay, all of them in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye. John?
Aye.
Yeah.
Jessica.
Aye.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by zero. Whew, alright. Um, okay, next order of business, we have Firefly Media here this evening. Um, I think that's you, right?
That's me.
Yes, okay. So I don't know who wants to kind of kick things off here. Thank you for coming this evening. So this is a, we hired like Firefly Media to do a virtual tour of this building. And today is kind of think the unveiling of this. And I'll let you guys take it over to.
Go ahead and do a little intro.
Yes, this is Nick from Firefly Media that we hired to do the 3D tour through the building. We also did drone video and took a lot of pictures. So we do have some things that we're going to share on the screen as well and let's talk a little bit about what we did.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here today, this evening. I was hired by, oh, so.
Yeah, try that, alright.
Check one, two, there we go, alright. Nicholas, Nicholas Luvivier. Uh, good evening. I'm Nicholas Luvivier with Firefly Media Incorporated. And I was hired by the town of South Berwick to do in a kind of an assessment on the condition of the building. And we're going to kind of go over that via a couple of things on the screen here. Uh, I was hired to do three different projects on this, to do a full 3D scan of the building, uh, which incorporated the first floor, second floor, and the third floor. And we're going to navigate through that just a little bit, kind of pinpoint a few areas that I would have seen uh, that needs all, you know, in need of repair. Um, I also did drone video, which will also be assumed posted on website, that kind of thing. Uh, so you'll be able to review that and kind of see other things that we've, that I focused on in the exterior portion of the building. Uh, I also did photography for this. I want to be clear that I am only a photographer and a videographer. I don't license a, an inspection or anything like that. This is a visual inspection via photography and videography only, okay? Uh, this is in, in my eyes of what I've seen, okay? Um, myself, I've seen many, many areas of this building that needs major repairs. Um, and we're actually, I'm going to come across over here to the computer and we're going to kind of dive into it a little bit.
There. Um, looking at this floor plan here, this is a 2D floor plan. We can kind of go from multiple ways of looking at the screen. So from here, basically, we can go into and walk through the entire property from floor to floor. And you have the, see exactly where the places that are in need. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go to the, the, uh, board here. board here, and one of the major concerns that I saw right from the very beginning is, this is in the police, the old police department building, and you can see on the floor here, there's major cracking, run on the floor, so this is apparent of building settlements, um, just decay over time. Um, so that's just one area. We'll go into, um, other areas here. Here, we're just kind of, there's little bullet points here that you can actually see where, you know, they're, we're highlighting certain things, the boilers, things like that. But again, you can see in some of the areas here that there are exposed wiring, things like this that's up on the top here. Uh, throughout the building, there's quite a few areas that actually have that, uh, exposed, uh, wiring, pipes, those kind of things. Uh, I'm gonna go up to the top, you know, setting point here. Other, uh, points that we can kind of look at here is flooring, carpeting, old carpeting, lots of stuff like this needs to be, uh, in repair as we move forward through the building. Very interactive, so you can kind of see exactly where, um, every part of the building is, so everybody can go in and see every part of this building. Where's your office? From this section here. Alright, so we'll go back to.
The bottom, right?
So some of the other areas that we see here is up to the ceiling tiles here, you can see stained ceiling. So this is just evidence of one leaky pipes, roof, um, things like that, uh, and you see this right throughout the building everywhere. So these are just some small spots that, you know, that are, are showing in the building. Really, the, the three D scan is really to just document and show every single piece of, uh, of the building from top to bottom. That's what a three D scan is all about, okay? Um, then we'll go back up to the third floor, which is the floor that we are in now. And one specific area that I thought, and when I came here to do the scan, it was quite warm, and you had the air conditioning that was on in here, and the first things that I could see when I came in here, for one, is that there are, I think, six air conditioners that are floor air conditioners, which are extremely non-efficient, and not using the, uh, the form of air conditioning that's supposed to be provided by the, you know, or part of the building itself. It, it just shows that you're probably spending a lot of money on electricity throughout the summertime months. Um, so this, this is the scan itself. What I want to do next is, and everybody's gonna be able to see this once it's on the website and things like that, but you can see how intuitive it is and how easy it is to kind of navigate through, basically, when you pull up the, this scan, you can just click right through it and walk through every single office, um, and, uh, throughout the entire building.
I have a question.
Sure. Nick.
Um, are you able to like? Sorry, um, are you able to measure as well, I have my stuff on like drill.
Yep, yep, so there's another tool, so all the little tools that I'm using are down at the bottom left-hand corner of the screen.
Yeah.
And right here, there's a measuring tool, so you can go ahead and like, if you wanted to measure this back portion of this wall, or, you know, window, if you wanted to measure, you know, a window itself, let's just pull up the tool itself, and you can come right over here to that, add a point, and then from here, you can actually draw it. You can actually see right at the top of the roof, right here. I would put it in here, and then I can draw it. Well, there you have it. Then you can go all the way to the other side of the room, and basically, from here, it says it's forty-nine point seven feet. Awesome, and this, this scan here is within centimeters, um, of accuracy, okay?
Perfect.
The building, um, itself, I think the square footage came in at a little over twenty thousand square feet. And, I'm not sure if I. But yes, you can, uh, measure every single point from top to bottom, as, uh, the point right here, all the way across the top, sixteen, you know, it looks like sixteen foot ceilings, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. Um, the next thing that I might want to bring up is, uh, what's, can you pull up the video? So here's the video, uh, done by all drone. Um, again, this video is, I think it was fifteen, fifteen minutes long, I don't know, fifteen minutes long. Um, what we wanted to do was document again, a couple of different things, is the exterior of the building, um, the roof itself, um, and then you'll see once we get into this video here. Um, we started with the chimney inspection first. Now, with this video as well, you can stop, you can even pinch the zoom, you'll be able to, to, you know, see close up on the, uh, well, so. Oh, it is, it is, yeah, um, so you'll be able to, to, you know, really see the details of this without having to have something up on the roof. This is the beauty of the drone, um, so the first part was the, uh, was the roof inspection first, and what you can see here is, um, it, I mean, it has, it looks good, there's good portions of the, of the, uh, the chimney that looks good, uh, when I went around to the other side, I could see definitely some areas that were in need of, of repair, and when I came back to do more of the photography outside, that was actually being addressed at that time when I came back. Um, so, that's just a little portion there. Let's see, kind of going around the backside of here.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Clarification, so this is the worst, the, the worst case, right? This is before anything happened, and then you're, but, you're photography documents, the repairs that were happening?
No, no.
Okay.
So everything that I've taken is, is to document what is there now.
I got you.
Yeah, so we did this back in, uh, it was the end of September, September, mid-September, I think it was.
Mid-late September.
Yeah, mid-late September, so I can't imagine that was much done between now and then, besides, I think that the gentleman, there was a group that was here doing a chimney and
Yes.
Repair at that time.
The day after Nick took this video is when the chimney repair, um, happened, so they did do pictures of the work after, so we'll be able to compare what they did versus what, um, they had here.
And you can, you can obviously see on the backside over here, and I took pictures, so we have pictures, but obviously, seeing it in video and live feed is really nice to see as well. So what you can see at the very top of the brickwork here, it is, is obviously, um, mortar that's missing, things like that, and that's just, that's kind of normal, whole period of time. Um, the next section that we did here was the, uh, rubber roof. And so basically, what I did was through the guided wires that were up on the roof because of the, uh, um, the antenna, I didn't care, I didn't care for while I was up on there, uh, to not, uh, or to avoid those wires and things, but again, this, the digital situation here, you can see, and you can slow this stuff down too, and kind of stop and, and see, the rubber roof is in good shape, from my visualized, again, I'm not an inspector, um, I know enough to be dangerous when it comes to construction, um, where I work on, on our own wall, so, uh, you can see, it's, it's in decent shape, there are some, you can see some bubbling, um, in the back up here, just a little bit. Right on the, right on the corners over here, which are, you know, obviously they're overlaid with the rubber and all, you can, you can see that there is some bubbling that's going along the sides over here, so, and that could be water that's underneath that, I mean, which shows evidence to having stains in the ceilings, uh, throughout the building. Um, but again, without having somebody that actually does an actual, uh, rubber roof inspection, but this is just to show you what is involved and what, what is, is in need. I want to skip over to one of the other spots that, um, after this, just move inspection here. Um, I want to go to the front of the building, and especially to this spot here. So here's the front of the, uh, the building itself, stairs completely decaying. And as we start to move up further, uh, above the doorway itself, it's been blocked off, uh, because of the, the concrete is falling down onto the, uh, the stairs itself, and we're gonna start climbing here in just a moment. Again, we're just trying to document and show what every single point of the building is, and I've gone through all the way around the entire building with video, so you'll be able to see every single place that really is in need of, of, of care, and, and you can see how bad the, the front of it is. I mean, it's, it's sad to look at this in, in this perspective right now, I mean, it's, it's been your guys' building for so many years, and to see something like this, and, I mean, and I, I couldn't even imagine what the cost would be to fix something like this to make it look like this once again. It, I don't even think that there would be anybody that could do something at this point.
That detail.
To this detail, exactly. Um, one of the documents that we were doing here too is, is windows, I mean, the cracking along all the sides of windows, um, the it's just, it is a lot of decay unfortunately. Um, majority of all the video that you're seeing here, I'm also taking pictures, so you'll be able to see all the pictures throughout the entire building as this was done with drone, and then also with the ground photography as well. And that's, that's pretty much, uh, what I have to kind of show out of all this, um, anybody have any questions?
I just have a quick question for, as part of your process when you're taking the three sixties inside, is anything that's potentially sensitive, like family pictures on shelves or whatever obscure to the public? When they would hate to see that out there?
Good point. Uh, let's go into that right now, actually. You can go back to that.
Is that something that, is that, is, is the answer to her question, yes?
Yeah. I don't have an answer for you, yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm, like, just trying to be separate time, like, we don't need to dig into it right now, but I think it's a point that we want to make sure is.
Yeah, I don't think that you're gonna be able to see, I mean, of, of, like, pertinent information, stuff like that, I mean, you're not gonna be able to read anything. There is a, a section that's in, um, well, when you're in the scan, you can pinch the zoom, so you can actually zoom in on certain areas and things like that, but you're, we're, we're not talking about a, well, we're talking about a camera that is not high megapixels. If we're to, it'll be very blurry to see something like that.
So, in theory, it's a public building, those spaces are public spaces. You know, I mean, it's confidential personnel records, um, some financial records, voided records, but in theory, anything on anybody's shelf desk, anything else with public view, it's not a private, so I wouldn't, you know, the staff will all hold what's happening, and so if there was anything they needed to take out, but, so then I'll use my, my office, for example, I didn't take the pictures down on my, for case of my family, but that's in public view anyway, so it's not a, because I don't consider it private. So stuff in this building is public, if you make the building, it's on my desk, it's public.
We did make sure that there was no confidential information out on anyone's desks or anything like that.
Computers were closed, stuff was cleaned off the desk, um, any, you know, anything that was, we thought might be private was taken down, so, I think we're okay.
Uh, may I ask the follow-up question for, um, what the town is thinking for, just, how are we displaying this video? Is this going to be uploaded to YouTube, are we going to post it on our website? My preference would be for it to be on our website, so we're kind of preventing that actors from seeing our building, but, um, you know, if we have that capability, we do advise all the information is in, but, but not pointing evil, that was gonna be my, my must-have put on our website, yes.
Yeah, should be on the website, the town office project.
Yeah.
That's why the purpose of why it was done.
I think we should try to put it at the top of the website, web page, sorry.
Um, the closest, the, I mean, like, like this here, um, each scan, each waypoint, you'll see a little circle on the floor, and so those are spaced, you know, six to eight to ten feet apart, so in this particular spot, I have a, a scan that is right directly below where this picture was taken, and then you can also see a, a waypoint that is over towards the door, so right here, even if I went in, and I oh, it's back in the area. You're, you're, you're really not going to see really any information itself, even, because obviously, there's a computer that's open right here, and I, I remember seeing this here, and this is now assumed. Yeah, that's, that's zoomed in now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just wondering how user-friendly this is for people that go on it, because I have days where I'm not even sure I know how to turn my own computer on.
Sure.
And I'm like, is he right-clicking, is he left-clicking, is he scrolling, so my concern is, is Jennifer's phone gonna be blowing up with people of, I don't get how to use this program, and not so much the video part, when you push play, you push pause, that's pretty simple, but when you are going in and clicking the tool and measuring, and I'm sure people probably won't get that detailed when they're getting into it, um, but I'm just a little concerned about how user-friendly this will be for our constituents.
I would say, uh, for this specific situation, when this was posted maybe underneath on the website, you're just gonna use a couple of simple words, click, point, double-click in order to get through the, the, uh, the scan itself.
Okay.
Most people are not going to, uh, try and measure something unless they're a contractor, and they know this particular program. Again, this is just for touring the building so that you don't have to physically have a tour, um, here.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
So in answer to your question, uh, some background, I've done two of these, one in Harrison for a public works building, same exact thing, not quite as big, and one in Raineswee we did for a new public facility bathroom, lifeguard station in the park, we didn't, we never had any problems. No, no one ever called a question exactly like you said, no one ever, because this is, this is technology that you use today for real estate, people selling homes, so you go on and click, and you want to take the tour of a home, you take the tour of a home, take the tour of a car, so I haven't, we used it twice, and I didn't have the issue, so, I'd tell her it could be different. Do the thing.
Like I said, I have days where I can't even turn my computer on.
If you have a problem, my phone is always available to you, you have my cell phone, you call me, and I'll walk you right through it.
Alright.
Okay.
Fair enough, thank you, Tim.
Any questions? I don't think I have any other questions. This is awesome, I think it's gonna be great to put up on the website and definitely kind of check the box of what we're trying to do here by getting the state of the building out there without having to ask staff to give guided tours, so.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for.
That's, that's the beauty of this particular technology, is having that to be able to not
Yeah.
take up anybody else's time. Yeah.
The exterior too, like, I, I think, like, asking forward with, you know, whatever we're gonna do with the building, I imagine especially the exterior stuff will be really beneficial, because it's hard to get to, you know, so. Thank you for coming in tonight, thank you for all of your, your work on this. Thank you. Alright, um, that was our only report for the patient, um, I'd ask you a public comment for anything not on the agenda, anyone in the room? Ben, go for it.
Let's stop screen sharing.
Good evening, from Clary, Tensplain, Sale. Uh, I know we have a problem with the elevator. Election Day is coming. Does anyone get, get stuck, get stuck in the elevator? That's the big question. I know you don't want to spend money on the building, but, uh, it's still a public building.
Thank you.
May I respond?
Yeah.
So the elevator's had a recent inspection, and though, we, we know what the issues are, we don't anticipate any issues for. So the elevator has had recent inspection and though we we know what the issues are, we don't anticipate any issues for a lot of the day.
Uh anyone else in the room? Uh I thought I heard somebody on Zoom.
Yeah, let me, let me, yes, yes. I just have a couple of announcements of events coming up. One is the
Can you state your name and your address and stuff?
Oh, I'm sorry, Pat Robinson, uh Rattle Street.
Thank you.
Let's forget that, sorry. That is the fifteenth annual soup supper, raise funds for Keeps South Earth Warm, which is to help uh residents who have trouble paying their fuel bills. It is Wednesday, November first, from five to seven at Spring Hill, who generously donates the room to us. And um it's, you get soup, bread and cookies for donation. And um the second event is for Great Works Regional Land Trust. We are having an event, a public event at Coming to Mill Park on October twenty first from uh twelve, twelve to four, I think. Um and it is, it is, it's to raise awareness for the San Francisco Title Waters uh project we're working on, which town don't, has donated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards it. Um to register, please go to GWRLT.org slash W two double Woods to Water. Um just reading that, we want to know how many people are coming. So I hope.
Sorry, can you, can you repeat that address?
Uh GWR, GWRLT.org slash W, the number two W, Woods to Water, right?
Okay, thank you.
If you just go to the land trust website.
Okay.
Click on the, on homepage is the Woods to Water campaign. Get to it that way too. And I encourage all your town councillors to come and Tim as well and Jen as well. You facilitated the donation of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it'd be nice to know, for you guys to know what's going on.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Any other, anyone else on Zoom? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. Um our first order of unfinished business is to take action on amendments to the assessors lot merger policy. Uh so we had a public hearing on this topic two weeks ago now. Um and we have received support from um a memo of support, I guess, from the planning department uh to move, from the planning board, sorry, to move forward with um these changes and the changes are largely just changes to um cover us from like a legal perspective. Uh all right, so anyone else discussion on this or anything? I feel like we all look like we're like just on our phones, like not paying attention and not engaged, I'm sorry.
For the public to know, none of them have Wi-Fi.
The Wi-Fi in the building is working, but it's not working for our computers, so we're navigating with our phones. So um I'll go ahead and um uh make a motion to adopt the changes to um chapter A, one forty-two, the assessors lot merger policy as um published in our support docs. Second, any discussion? All of the favors say aye, John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes by zero. That takes care of unfinished business. Uh for new business item number one, um we're going to uh table this appointment until our next meeting on October right, October twenty fourth. So that's something that will be on our next agenda. Uh I think we need a motion for that, so I'll just go ahead and make a motion to uh move new business number one to our agenda on October twenty fourth.
Second.
Second, um any discussion? All those in favor say aye, John?
Aye.
Jeff? All right. So good, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes by zero. We will talk about that next meeting. And our next order of business in regards to the Firefly Media Town Hall Virtual Tour. Um this is just a formal action to um officially accept these as town town documents that we can post on the website. Um so the motion would be, I'll make a motion to accept Firefly Media Video 3D Tour pictures and allow us to actually post to the town website. We have a motion and a second. When do we think that those will be up? Like at the end of the week? Definitely by the end of the week, cool, okay, hopefully tomorrow, okay. Any discussion?
Well, that that will close out that contact with them.
Correct. Uh all right, all those in favor um of accepting Firefly Media Video 3D Tour pictures, say aye, John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes by you. All right, um up next, uh new business number three, civil consultants memo. So we hired civil consultants in July to complete a review of the exterior of our building that we just saw in crazy detail. Um and um this was kind of, the impetus to this was as a result of our uh insurance carrier request from that. Tim, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
No, the only, the only part of the last page, on page four or five, the cost of complete exterior of this building was not part of the project. All we did was identify what needs to be repaired. Uh we can assist the town, assist the town and consult with contractors to provide budget cost repairs. Now that we have this, I'll send this on to insurance company to tell them we'll get price repairs. Zoom, this one is practical based on the weather, probably in Raleigh. Probably be that brain, what place brain early, you know, coming up here. On only the pressing things that we found, only the probably concrete piece.
Yeah.
Whatever that is.
Okay.
So, and well, there's the only other one is the uh community center, that is more regrettable, that that needs to be done. That would be, how long did we do that? Now, because we're not sure of the structural integrity of that action, we want to make sure that um
Oh, yeah.
There's sort of detail on the plan, you don't indicate how the act of veritaria is supported. Their recommendation is some some destructive testing and removal of finishes be completed to determine damage to existing masonry support. Um should be conducted by a mason with engineering oversight. So we'll try to put that on our plate, because I've done it through the process, you know, fully. We did a good job, they took a lot of drawings, so I'm very happy with it. Cost money, but we're gonna fix it, so.
The renderings were fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, the with the little boxes to show you where things are. And we've got a good, decent of what's going on in the exterior. Uh okay, so we just need to um accept this memorandum from civil consultants. Any questions or discussion? Yeah, will this be placed on the town hall? Page, I think it should, yeah. Um all right, I will make a motion to accept the memorandum from civil consultants as presented. We have a motion in a second, Stefan. All of the favors say aye, John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes by zero. And our last order of business this evening, uh as we got in regards to Halloween. Um so we typically close off some roads in town for Halloween. Um and this has not been a practice that we've done. The practice of closing the roads has happened in the past, but the practice of making it a formal town capital action has not been has not been a thing at work, if we're anything, trying to do things the right way forward. So um this item um is essentially just taking action to um close those roads for Halloween festivities. So um the normal roads what are the normal roads that we close?
Leave us just for an minute.
Just Addy.
If I leave the parade.
Yeah, okay. For the parade, yeah. So for trick or treating, it would be in Addmont State. Um and for the parade, it would be Main Street and North Street. Any other questions or anything I need to add there? Okay, uh so I'll go ahead and make a motion to um allow the normal roads in Addy to be closed for the safety of trick or treaters on the evening of October thirtieth. And to also allow the parade starting at Community Center at five thirty um and then at Central School, so that we're closing Norton and Main Street, and that parade also happens on the thirtieth, correct? Great. There is our motion. Any discussion, questions? Can I make a motion? Uh all right, we have a motion, let's keep all all those in favor say aye, John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes by you. All right, that takes care of all of our business for the evening. Um town manager report, I'll turn it over to Stefan.
Okay. The fireway department. Redbonde is gonna take you down, dispose of, saves us a ton of money uh by burning it down. And now a pack of water has been put in, which is already being utilized. The Merz Lane has been shimmed with pavement, a railroad alley would be shimmed, which is just a thin top coat. With the first part being completed next week, voice control will be milled, which means it's gonna grind the top section. Make it look like a rock pavement, like you see. Um and then that'll be, that'll be, they'll add a small layer of surface back over that, with hair to that for the winter, so they can follow it, and then that's gonna be paved early next spring. With the final top, oh that section by your house looks real bad.
I don't know where I live, Tim.
There's one thing we know. Uh trucks are all raised in the winter, the new F five fifties in production, almost ready for delivery. Um we should be here for the next meeting, so you'll have a chance to see what that looks like and see how it's all set up and how that's gonna work. Police department had four rounds, five accidents, sixty-six traffic stop. Uh office have completed the annual fire on training certification. Fire department has had seven calls lost to the week, year to date is four hundred and one, up from last year. Uh this week is National Fire Prevention Week. Firefighters are gonna be visiting local schools, daycare is throughout the week, they're over at Central School today. Be an open house at the fire station on Sunday, October twenty ninth, and ten to two for the public. Uh key reports, all apparatus and equipment are in service. Annual meetings and inspections of the fleet are scheduled for this month, pump testing, ladder testing, all the stuff that's required by law. Uh this past Monday, in addition to our monthly major site, the members formed a deep thing and reorganization. The trucks and equipment since the months, since the month-long redbonde trainings have now been concluded. Code enforcement, five building permits, one internal plumbing permit. Jenny's done nineteen inspections, and she's had eighteen, so playing thirty-five lots of division is still on the agenda for San Antonio Saints. Uh there's a major home occupation on Highland Avenue, we're gonna have this office for an application. And we're still talking about the I one, I two.
By the library, the building has been pressure washed and the windows were washed today. They did another ferry house program as well today and has received a lot of interest. They had forty people sign up for the October reading program. In recreation, soccer is going well and with the red bar gone, the additional parking is well organized and marking upgrades. People enrichment after school programming at Central School is going well as well and receiving good feedback about the new partnership with Stambology. Kids Run Free is the free event uh before the Halloween parade on thirtieth at Community Center. They're gonna do it in the field right there, so the kids can get some energy out. Um the parade starts at five thirty. It's seniors this Wednesday, tomorrow is Oktoberfest, country carnival theme. And their next trip is on October nineteenth, going to Winham, New Hampshire for Splish Splash, the music by Bobby Darnin. And assessing, Brennan is working on CIA technologies. They've submitted their draft map changes for her review. And once she has completed that, GIS will be updated as well as new PDFs printed for the revised tax maps video. She's also started the twenty twenty-three musical valuation report, which must be sent to the state by November first. Which is an extensive ten-page reconciliation of the tax rate calculation form, that'll be assessing with data and including all the exemptions. She's also started the annual sales return to the state, where the sales values ratios from July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three are all reported to the state. The town clerk has sent out almost all three thousand transfer sticker, transfer station stickers. We've had to order an additional one thousand, that should be before they in preparation for the November election, absentee ballots are being sent out as requested. And as of this afternoon, we have our new mail locks out front by the main entrance, so that people can drop their absentee ballots off at their convenience. At the transfer station, they have two new canisters that have been purchased and are in place. They have three open tops, which makes it easier to compact more of the debris. And they have, baler switches have been fixed for the second time since June. This machine was purchased eighteen years ago, it was a used machine and it is now being worn out. So we are looking on getting three quotes to get a new baler for the transfer station. And that's so bales are plastic, so they can be recycled. Economic development, Denise has been working with the farmers market and when they get trade, they feel that the central school is in the best place for them. Um it leads to traffic and feasibility, so they are gonna try a new location for the red barn used to be, and that will be safe. Uh she is currently advertising for citizens, students and business owners to participate on the downtown facade improvement grant committee, as well as the downtown revitalization planning thing, if anybody's interested, you spell out those forms. And finance benefits CD, I have had a lot of meetings, eleven business meetings, forty-five staff meetings and rad appointments in the last two weeks. Board closure process has started, thirty date demand notices will be going out on November second, and we only have nine that are potential. So we're hoping they'll pay for the due date in early December. Firefly Media, as you uh saw Nick, he had finished and completed everything, he did a good presentation. The audit, uh the onsite work has been completed. Uh she's just got a few more things to take care of at his end, and he usually waits till the very end to get the final report to us in December, when he's gonna be presenting to the council the final audit, Friday.
So it's like Christmas time for you.
So I booked it for the first one in December, so we're on there, I think it's the twelfth, tenth and twelfth of December, about seven.
The way I associate him with Christmas.
Yes, like that, then we can start budget and do it all over again. The other thing, uh we, like this morning, I hit the final approval button on the grant from FEMA for the Christmas storm. The grand total that we paid out to clean up from the Christmas storm was two hundred and five thousand thirty-seven dollars. So we will be getting back from FEMA and MEMA ninety percent of that. So we're gonna be getting a reimbursement of one hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars back to those expenses that we have already already paid yet.
And and on the, I want the council to note, um that we haven't done a FEMA recovery in probably ten, twelve, fifteen years here, all that money's been going by every time, it's been a declaration. And we changed that now with Ray being a new EMA director, Jen and Jay working on that. Um that's a lot of work, it's been, it's really labor intensive, the numbers. Um but in the end, if you stick with it, you know, the original amount we submitted was fifteen thousand. And then we ended up with getting a hundred and eighty-four thousand back. So it's a long-timed process, I wanna thank Jen, I wanna thank Jay and I thank Ray for putting all this together and working this. And it's, it's a tough project, but the benefit is, once we kind of know how to do it, now they know how to do it. Now we can go ahead and do it, but good work on that, saving the town some money. Uh over the last week, I've had eight business meetings, forty staff meetings, three appointments, and I talked to lawyers in my dream. Oh boy. Um website, Google Analytics, we've had two point eight K users, the town hall project has had fifty-one views. Important for users, I'll pass it up to you. Um Dawn wanted to ask me, do you want to continue with the same information? Or would you like analytics on something else, or are you good with this, or what would you like?
It is too much for her to pull these every council meeting, seeing as though we had a workshop and kind of
Uh oh.
A lull, yeah.
a lull, yeah. Um, if we could take this off of her plate for a little while until we ran that out. Actually, I'd probably like to see it for after the videos displayed.
Yeah, yeah, like, so if we're planning to get the videos up there weekly, maybe our next council meeting, it'd be interesting to see if there's I'm not worried, we'll see a spike there. Um, but then I agree, I think after that, maybe we can start to taper, taper off a little bit, quite as much.
Okay, perfect. Um, safety committee meeting, the safety committee met, uh, we had full attendance participation. Working on individual projects, or one project in the same, there are all the problems such as egg inside. Or then next month will be emergency lighting, and up after that will be emergency, stuff like that. The pump is, is what we're checking, where fire prevention month was, merge the actual drill, they did one over community center last week. Worked out really good. Now they're gonna try one with fully, I guess, staff. Um, we, last Thursday, L D first management training session is going to be four or five of them. Um, Chief Ruger and Lieutenant Upton taught that from where they just graduated from the FBI National Fire, uh, National Police Certification Academy. Did a really good job. We, we had a whole present slide, a presentation, we only went through half the slides. Very group interactive. We spent a lot of time talking about management, leadership, the difference between those two, with the staff mentors, who their mentors, individually mentors were, and their groups growing up. Um, and now we're moving on to this week, we had homework assignments, we had to talk about what their
The philosophy of your management style.
Philosophy of management style, we're all gonna go over that. Um, this will all be hopefully, when we're done four or five weeks into this, and we've completed, we're going over policies, our policies, procedures, our quota ethics. We're going over some working group examples of personnel issues and personnel problems, how they solve them. And then the very last one, we'll have Matt Karasavage come in for an hour and do um a whole session on personnel and and due process and procedures for that and so forth. But I think um when we're done, we'll, we'll be giving graduation certificates to the staff, so they have something to show for it. Um, Diane, you were in on it, um, you wanna, how was your, how was the class, what did you think?
So far? So far, it was a very interesting, um, or he took off Tim, where he was saying that we were asked to, you know, speak about our mentors. It just gets you thinking because of the way that they presented the question. It wasn't just like, who's your mentor? Um, I actually little pull up a mentor that I haven't, didn't think I had. Um, but going forward, I think it's gonna be a very um helpful and insightful program.
And I think the interactive part of it all is just way more interesting, it means people involved and engaged in conversation if it was further, so, yeah, it was pretty good. Then there's all. Tim, remember before we, are, are we, are you moving out for like the training perspective, the training session? Do you have more on training?
No.
Okay. Um, this just reminds me, like, we had implemented a policy, or we wanted all of our boards to do a training, that we need to set that up for us with that.
Yeah, I'm waiting for a callback to get dates from him, and he will spend, yeah, he'll come in to you guys. We need to go over certain topics that, um, quota ethics, um, your rules and regulations, and due process for employees, how that works, why, why you have a management style, and government. That's, so, yeah, that's, that's in the process of law. Um, employee photo wall has, uh, have been completed, Terry's been over there putting those up. Um, as you said, we've already had a couple compliments and people walking in today that saw it, they're like, wow, that's, that's really cool. Um, we're almost done, we're just waiting for the lettering, and I think we'll have the lettering in the next couple days. Right, Diane?
Yes, the lettering, what is the, to, to know who to?
Oh, it's gonna be, is the, the lettering, we're putting some lettering on the, with white stripes on the bottom.
Okay.
They'll say welcome to Town South Borough, and it says something about uh your employees or your staff and something. Your, your team, you know, that, that had a, you know, make the town of South Borough better or something, I can't remember what we, what, but Diane, Diane's working on it. You'll see when, but it's just something that makes it welcoming, that's all.
Great, welcoming heritage, perfect.
Um, I sent you, after talking to Lee J today, uh, I sent Code and Jeff's email on. Lee J had already been working on it, it's all done. I sent that back out to you, so the stuff I sent you today is completed, whether you wanna call it. Um, it's actually the, it's on L D two thousand and three, but it's one forty, I think it's fifty-two, and it was, but it's gonna be the ordinance number. So he said Jeff all the stuff and put it there, and I, I copied what he, I copied and pasted what he said back. So one of the things we talked about is some language from the law that wasn't in the ordinance. And one of the things Lee J said is, we don't generally put statute language in the ordinance, because if they change the statute, we have to go back and change the ordinance. What they do is they reference the stat, the statute in the ordinance. And then when they change the statute, they would have to change the ordinance, it's still just a reference. So that's, should be, that's in your box I sent you, there's like six components to it, including Table A. So take a look at it, that'll be for the workshop on the twenty-sixth, where Lee J said everything is completed, and it's done. So that should be there. Um, the last I have is a letter from the uh county commissioners, York County, um, awarding to the Town South Borough, awarding Henry's Bridge Road Community Improvement Association a Spirit of America Award for twenty twenty-three. That'll be on uh, November, the first year's award presentation will be held on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at three thirty P P M at the York County Government Building, one forty-nine Joseph Bridge Road in Alprin. So, or you can attend, so I'll send that out, I'll scan it, send it out to you tomorrow. And can you reach out to lead this group and have them, and maybe a council or two should in attendance. And that is all I have for the minute, you have the
question, thoughts, ideas for turn. I mean, I had something on, on the, the housing stuff, with that Lee J did.
Yeah.
Not sure if this is the time to talk about it. Um, I based there, I just walked in, I saw that they came through and saw briefly, I didn't have any chance to really look at it. Um, but I did see that it's different than what was presented at the meeting on September twelve. So I'm not sure how we are supposed to move forward. Um, if we're having a workshop, in my mind, that workshop was based off of what was presented to us. Cause that night on September twelve, the council's charge was put this to public hearing or do what we did, put it to more work.
Put it to a workshop.
Luckily, we moved it to a workshop.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is that what has been presented by DJ now is quite different. So, we made a workshop based on what was given to us. In my mind, I think that workshops invalid because we have a whole brand and thing like economics, so I'm not sure where we moved.
I mean, I would assume we would workshop the latest thing from Lee J. We, I mean, we should be workshopping the most current, up-to-date, yeah.
Okay, so answers, do you have thoughts? No. You, you're workshopping the top, the top, the subject, right? So you're working whatever documents we, we encounter between now and then. You didn't adopt a document to workshop and say, this is what we're gonna do. You had a, you had a proposal in front of you. During that meeting, you wired about sending information to S and P D C with the approval of the council, we did that. We got those answers back, which is what you said, remember, you said this will help speed up the process on, on October twenty-sixth. So we haven't formally adopted anything, we're, we're, we're doing a workshop on the topic.
This isn't like a public hearing, where one's documents put out there.
Right, so, so you'll do the workshop and say, okay, we like what DJ did, come back to a council meeting and have to adopt that language, then do the public hearing. So you're having a workshop on the topic.
Yeah.
And you're just having all the information that's coming in. This is the most updated because you would ask the questions. Remember in the last meeting, you said that, you said, in order to facilitate the process when we go advanced, and I said, getting there on the twenty-sixth, can I do this? And the council said yes, and you sent it to me and we did. So Lee J has made those changes. So now you have, what you'll do, you'll take the old document that you had, the new document that you have, and you'll take both of those to the workshop and see how those bear together, have that discussion, and then by consensus, not by formal vote, by by consensus, say, okay, this is, if, you know, you may wanna change the word doctrine, it'll be, I don't know. But you'll make whatever changes you want, then that will come out of the workshop. That's what will be presented to you as, and for you to vote on, to take to the public hearing.
I got you, okay. I, I was surprised by what we got back from DJ. I was thinking it was just gonna be a quick thing. So it's semi-quick, like bullet points, so that's why I asked that question, I didn't know.
So now, we're right on track, all the documents coming in, and any other documents, again, any information will go up in the workshop, and then it'll go from you'll congeal it together, say, yeah, this is the one we wanna go with, this looks good. We push that forward, that one comes out to you in public, we'll load on that document, that'll go to the public hearing.
Even though what we got, did the planning board have that public hearing on what DJ?
Got it, yeah, but, but you have the right to make those changes.
I got you, okay.
That's why it goes to the council level.
Yeah. So I would just say between, like, if there are any additional changes between now and our workshop, I just wanna make sure that that gets um distributed.
I talked to Lee J this afternoon, Madam Chair, he said this is done.
Okay, so what we got today is?
Is completed.
Okay, cool.
This is, this is what, and there's only one other town in, in York County right now that's completed this, so we're the second town. And he said, you guys are right there. So we made the changes that you had talked about, because we called them right after the last meeting, and had the discussion.
Yeah.
We're done, we J completed it, it's all ready to go, it's up to you to, to just take both, if you wanna take those two documents, or just take the final documents. You highlighted those changes, look for the ones in yellow, and I'm gonna just change them.
Okay. Great, any other questions?
Welcome.
Counselor comments, John?
I have none tonight, thank you.
Yeah. Jeff?
Um, I just, um, I was hoping to add, um, a discussion about, um, um, what am I saying? Come on, I, about that, um, parking, parking, um, parking lines or parking ordinance, we had brought, it had been brought to us um last year when the fall sweep at the parking lot had come up.
Right.
And Chief Ruger had some input, and there was a lot of input, and it, I think it just kind of fell flat because the situation kind of calmed itself down. Um, but I, I wonder, I was, I had talked with Chief Ruger in passing about it, and I was, I, I just wanted to bring it up as far as a discussion. If we can put it on for a agenda item to discuss, if we need to or want to move forward with that, uh, right now, I feel like there's, um, uh, opportunity to make sure that we're empowering the police as far as with, uh, parking and, uh, on-street parking and things like that right now, I think we have, uh, the ability to uphold any parking tickets if they were held, and I, I just wanna make sure that we're tied up and, and clear in what, what direction we wanna go with.
So you wanna just add an agenda item to a future meeting to talk about parking ordinances?
Yeah, just so we're addressing it.
Okay, can we, I mean, does anyone, we can press that? We, can we, can we do that maybe in like that next meeting, when it, when our agenda kind of has room for it, um, which may, may ever be the case, but, um, and then just like a little bit of a level set for us, of like where, 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 where things at, you know? Any other?
That's all, thank you.
Jessica?
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say that I just recently noticed, um, and Tim, if you mentioned this in a manager's report, I apologize for slowing down. Um, I noticed that our Purple Heart signs are up, um, around town, and they just, uh, look, I said that the Rollins were Combs, and you see it as soon as you come out and go that way. And I'd just like to say thank you to, um, I believe our, um, to one of our departments helped install those.
Public Works.
Public Works, so thanks to Public Works for helping out with that, and, um, that was it, they look good.
I don't have any good meaning. Done.
Madam Chair, I move, we adjourn.
Thank you. Anyone second?
Second.
Jeff seconded, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Return, so thank you everyone.